However, local school boards will have the power to decide whether to keep mask mandates in place for students, teachers, and staff. At this time, no decision has been made. We are currently reviewing district, county, and state data trends and hope to make a decision within the coming weeks. I would like to share that we will be implementing a test to stay programs. Our test to stay program will allow asymptomatic, fully vaccinated but not boosted employees who are exposed to a person with COVID-19 to continue working during their quarantine period. Employees who participate in the test to stay program will be required to be tested on day one, day three, and day five, and should be quarantined when not working. Participants in the test to stay program will be limited to fully vaccinated employees who have not, again, who have not received their boosters or third dose after five months of initially being vaccinated and who meet the following criteria: they do not have any signs of symptoms of COVID-19, have been identified as a close contact, and are not exempt from masking. New Brunswick Public Schools will also be instituted a voluntary K-12 COVID-19 test to stay program for students who are exposed to a person with COVID-19 in school. Exposed students who participate in the test to stay program are required to be tested every other day, which allows the students to stay in school and continue in-person learning. Parental consent is required to participate in the program, and consent forms will be sent home within the next few days. Also, in the coming weeks, our school family liaisons will be hosting a virtual informational session with our families to discuss the benefits of testing students for COVID-19 while in school, as well as to review the required consent forms. On February 8th, the district received 29,920 federally allocated Binex-9 rapid antigen COVID-19 tests. These tests will support our test to stay program. Also, we are continuing our efforts of making COVID-19 testing available to all students and staff on Mondays and Fridays. This past weekend, through a partnership with the New Jersey Black Women Physician Associations, we were able to host another very successful vaccine clinic on Saturday, February 12th, at Retro School. We were able to administer over 237 first doses, second doses, and boosters to students, parents, and staff. I want to personally thank them, and I'm sure the board as well. We want to thank our staff, who have volunteered their time on Saturdays to assist with the vaccine clinic. Specifically, and I'm taking a risk here, our family liaisons, our nurses, our district administrators, and teachers. And if I forgot someone, please email me tomorrow so I know. The district will be hosting its second virtual job fair on Wednesday, February 23rd, for all district positions. If you know of anyone, please let them know to please apply. But these, um, positions, they can apply by visiting our district's social media platform, our Twitter, our talking points, Facebook, and our district website for more information. I would also like to give a special thanks to our school counselors. We celebrated you last week during National School Counseling Week, and want you to know that we appreciate you every day. With the compounded effects of the pandemic, our school counselors and everything that you have asked, been asked to do, you have remained steadfast in supporting students' academic success, social and emotional growth, and college and career planning. Again, thank you. This year, Black History Month emphasizes the theme of health and wellness, which is especially relevant given the ongoing pandemic. The experience of the COVID pandemic highlights the need to take an active role in maintaining and safeguarding our health. This is particularly true for blacks, who have been historically underserved in terms of healthcare. Data suggests that the COVID-19 pandemic has had a disproportionate impact on people of color who experience higher rates of COVID-19-related hospitalization and death compared to non-Hispanic white populations. Collectively, we must reduce these disparities to support the groundwork set by the following black trailblazers, and I'm just going to name about five. And these are black trailblazers in the realm of health. Daniel Hale Williams, who conducted the first documented successful open-heart surgery on a human. Charles Drew discovered that blood plasma can be dried and reconstituted. By preserving plasma in blood banks, this procedure helped save the lives of countless American soldiers during World War II and the later conflicts. Jane Cook Wright created an innovative technique to deliver heavy doses of anti-cancer medication to tumors located within the spleen, kidneys, and other hard-to-reach parts within the body. Hard work positioned chemotherapy from a last-ditch effort for cancer treatment to a feasible therapy option. Otis Boykin, he improved the pacemaker by developing a control unit that regulated the pacemaker with more precision to help people maintain a regular heartbeat. And Ben Carson, who completed the first surgical separation of conjoined twins attached at the back of the head. So, understanding the lessons of black history and just taking a look at those who worked before us, who trailblazed in the realm of health alongside what the president is teaching us, and just take a look at what's happening now in the present. It should embolden our commitment to recognize and disrupt systems that perpetuate inequities that negatively impact people of color. More so, black history is American history, and systems of racism and oppression hurt all of mankind. In closing, I would just like to take a moment of silence and honor Mr. Spencer's wife, Ms. Renee Lucas Spencer, who we lost recently and is now born into everlasting eternity. Mr. Spencer, I just want to say, I've watched you the past couple of weeks. Thoughts and prayers go out to you and your family, but by watching you the past couple of weeks, I've learned so much. I've learned so much on just how you handle things and how you go about your day-to-day, and I just want to say thank you for teaching that. That concludes my remarks.
And Mr. Spencer, I echo that. You are a model of humanity. Is there a motion to accept the superintendent's report?
Uh huh.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, have you?
Mr. Adorno?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yeah.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla?
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Before I turn it over to Ms. Ashley Caldwell, I'd add one name to the list, and a lot of people don't know about Anesimis. So, Anesimis was a slave in Boston and actually brought over from Africa the process of putting a virus in someone in small amounts so that the body would develop, and that was from a black slave, so they eliminated smallpox because of that. And the virus process we use today came from an African-American slave. So much of what we've done, and, you know, we talk about this, this is American history. This is not, it's not special history, it's not unique history, it is American history that hasn't been taught, so I'm so pleased that you, that you share that. And so, Ms. Ashley Caldwell?
Good evening. My name is Ashley Caldwell, and I will be presenting the student representative report. During the week of January 24th, 2022, to January 31st, senior portrait photos were held this week in the media center. On January 25th to the 26th, the Fungur Games were held for ninth-grade students in the gym. The two-day event focused on ninth-grade team competitions and their physical education classes. Winning classes received a pizza party on January 28th as a thank you for good sportsmanship and teamwork. January 27th, 2022, winter parent-teacher conferences were held this evening. Parents attended the event virtually, and hundreds of parents or guardians met with their teachers to discuss academic progress. Throughout the last two weeks of January, eighth-grade students at the middle school, McKinley School, Paul Robeson, Lincoln Annex, and Woodrow Wilson virtually met with Ms. Lugo and Mr. Russ Knapp to discuss ninth-grade classes for next year. It was great to connect with our rising ninth graders and to answer questions about the high school. This concludes the student representative report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Caldwell. Any further report? Moving on to item number six, the facilities committee report. Mr. Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. President. We've completed this year's water testing. As you may be aware, in response to COVID-19, our school district has created the New Brunswick Public Schools Safe Return Plan. As part of this plan, drinking fountains and many other drinking water sources have been taken offline. We made this decision in an effort to reduce the potential for transmitting COVID-19. Drinking fountains are potential high-touch points and gathering locations. During this period, when water sources are offline, recycled water bottles are being provided in ample quantities for both students and staff. Because several water sources are offline, the number of water fixtures being tested is much lower than previous years. In general, the sources tested were locations where water bottles would not provide a suitable substitute, such as kitchen sinks, food prep equipment, ice machines, and nurses' offices. Of the seventy-two locations tested, none had readings above the acceptable limits. The full water testing report is available on our website. The Blanqueta B. Valente Community School District, we have completed our review of DMR architects' final construction documents. DMR has released to submit the documents to NJDCA for the remaining approvals. The final educational approval was received from the Department of Education on August 18th, 2021. As of October 19th, NJDCAs, build review approvals were released for structural steel and underslam plumbing work, fire protection, site and civil, footings and foundations, and the grease trap. Elevator plan review releases was released, received on 8/16/2021, and partial electrical underground plan review was received on September 7th, 2021. The Treatment Works Approval, TWA, was August 11th, 2021. Water main extension permit August 20th, 2021. Stormwater management plan review conditional approval August 20th, 2021. The Delaware-Raritan Canal Commission approval September 15th, 2021. Full-site soil erosion and sediment control plan approval September 20th, 2021. All pre-construction remedial actions have been completed. The underground tanks have been removed, the holes have been properly filled, and the job trailers have been delivered to the site. Work of the temporary electrical units has been started. Site demolitions, clearings, and evacuations of both detention basins have been completed. Grading and building pad work is complete. Underground stormwater work is in the final stages of completion. Athletic engineering continues to be on-site for independent inspection and testing services released to concrete quality. Substantial progress has been made on the pouring of concrete footings and foundations. Concrete footings and foundations work will continue for the next few weeks, followed by site utilities, underslam utilities, and the pouring of the on-grade slab. Structural steel is still scheduled to be on-site for April 21st. The completion of the school is still scheduled for August 2023. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer, for that thorough report. One time I was deputy commissioner of the Department of Community Affairs, so I know that whole process, going through construction, and it's a pretty comprehensive process. So, moving on to item number seven, the athletic committee report. Ms. Varela is not here, who's going to take the report?
Yes. As the winter season wraps up, there are many highlights to be shared. The boys' basketball team is entering the preliminary round on Tuesday.
Can you hear me now?
As the winter season wraps up, there are many highlights to be shared. The boys' basketball team is entering into the preliminary round on Tuesday versus Spauttwood High School after their victory in the play-in round versus Somerset Boatseth. Kelly Borford finished second in the regional tournament for the girls and will compete in the state tournament on Sunday, February 20th. She is trying to win the state title for the second time in two different weight classes, 190 pounds and heavyweight. Brian Garcia is closing in on 100 wins in his career and will compete in the district tournament on Saturday, February 19th, as the number-one seed for heavyweight. Josh Nazario placed third in the state sectional championships in the shot clip passing, his personal best by three feet. He will compete, he will compete in the GMC relays on February 21st with his teammate, Rhonda Elaralcy, and then in the state group tournament on February 26th. Even though the numbers around the state are decreasing, athletes are still tested, testing every week to help prevent the spread of COVID-19. The spring season will start on March 11th, and will begin with testing, and we will begin testing those athletes. For spring sports at the high school, we will have baseball, softball, track and field, volleyball, golf, and tennis. In the middle, in the middle school, there is baseball, softball, track and field, and for the first time ever, we will have volleyball. There is also a new face in the athletic office, Ashley Vega. She is the newest athletic administrative assistant and is, and has already stepped up and up to all the challenges and doing an amazing job. That is my report.
Thank you. Do we have a budget, athletic committee, that we need to put on?
Need of reconciliation.
Reconciliation, yep. Is there a motion to, is there a second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Adorno?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla?
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Moving on to item number eight, the curriculum policy committee report. Mrs. Emra El Seawood, chairperson.
The Curriculum Policy Committee did meet, and we got an update on the, some, some of the activities that the department has been participating in. The department is partnered with the Institute for Learning and National Science Teaching Association to provide directors, supervisors, and specialists content-focused coaching in English, language arts, mathematics, and science with a specific criteria and framework on high-quality coaching practice. The focus is on creating an effort-based problem-solving stance toward teaching and learning, understanding that learning comes from active engagement, hard work, experimentation, problem-solving, and reflection in a space of controlled risk, trust, and respect. And this models, modeling a commitment to continuous learning, and this is a follow-up to activities we've started to engage in to help our students provide additional resources. The in-person Extended School Day program for the second semester began February 1st and will end on May 26th. The program is available at all schools on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays before or after the school day for support in multiple disciplines. A focus has been placed on credit-bearing courses during the Extended School Day program for New Brunswick High School for identified students in Algebra I, ELA 9, Algebra-Based Physics, and World History. Throughout the months of December and January, staff members participated in the Choice Board Social Media Challenge, where each school competed as teams to highlight their collaboration, creativity, and engagement in the classroom. With great excitement, we announced the winner of the New Brunswick Public School Social Media Choice Board Challenge is Paul Robeson, Community School for the Arts. We congratulate them on having the most interest in sharing and showcasing the amazing work at their school this year. The parent university ended the six-week Saturday workshop series with parents on the nurture heart approach. Parents were able to engage in a set of high-leverage strategies to serve as mental health support applicable to parenting. They openly shared their personal stories of challenges, successes, and transformation, and we really appreciate the parents that came out and attended, and we thank them from the bottom of our heart. As you know, February is Black History Month. To piggyback on Dr. Johnson, Dr. Caldwell, to build on their message, history is to be used to share and inspire our children and generations to learn about the contributions of many people from all backgrounds. The diaspora of the black experience is inclusive of many cultures, not one based on a monolithic group. This is the reason we should all celebrate black history always. In honor of Black History Month, we have provided lessons for students in all grade levels to explore the importance of black history, express their identity, and celebrate the contributions of African-Americans throughout history. Some topics have included "Black Lives Matter at School," Year of Purpose themes, researching and interviewing a person from history, creating a virtual family reunion in Google Flies, creating a flyer for Juneteenth celebration. As stated by visionary historian and writer Arturo Alfonsel Janberg, quote, "We need the historian and philosopher to give us with treasured pen the story of our forefathers, and let our soul and body with phosphorescent light brighten the chasm that separates us." We should cling to them just as blood is thicker than water. During the meeting, we reviewed all resolutions. They're included on the consent agenda for your approval. And we had, we're referring one policy, which is a mandated policy and recommend that is adopted on the first reading. And this policy is number 5751, sexual harassment of students. This is new federal regulations revise the definition of sexual harassment and include a detailed procedure on how public school districts must respond to allegations of sexual harassment. The final rule defines sexual harassment, requires the school district to designate a Title IX coordinator, which we already have in place, outlines notice requirements, and establishes reporting, investigation, hearing, and appeal process requirements. And again, this is a mandated policy, and the committee recommends its adoption on the first reading. That concludes my report.
I'm thinking about the, as we go forward with the such a curriculum with black history and other celebrations and other recognition of the diversity, the diaspora of this wonderful district. Was there any discussion this month, especially in Black History Month? Mrs. Seawood, about embracing all of this and expanding it into the curriculum, given all the controversy that, and I'm traveling around the country doing things, and I was just thinking about, I was just in Florida, and there's major controversy about that down there. So, have we thought anything about that, talking about how to teach American history and expand it?
Well, I'd always agree. And that was one of my hats many years ago. History should be inclusive, include everybody.
Everybody, yeah.
Along with the truth, their contributions. So, hopefully, we can progress enough that we can teach our children what the truth of this country is. And I've always given my input and made records.
I know you have, yes. And I wasn't going to say anything, but having just come back from Florida, I was sitting there thinking and just, there are places that, that actually say that it's illegal to say anything in class that's uncomfortable. If the history is uncomfortable in Florida and other parts, and so I just, I think it's worth, you know, having a strong standard as a school board that, that everyone counts. All history matters. Item number nine, the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey report. Two things I want to report. One, the commission continues to have record, record student counts. And what that means is that districts are, really around the entire state, are utilizing the services of the commission with students who are dealing with issues of special needs and... the services of the commission with students who are dealing with issues of special needs and being on the spectrum and dealing with emotional challenges. And so the commission is excited that we've exceeded the numbers that we thought and so it's going very well. The other thing is the prosecutor's office on February 23 at 9:30 a.m. is organizing at the commission and with participation of the commission, a partnership and school safety program. And we are honored to be represented by our own superintendent who's going to be on the board, so be on the panel. And so we're excited to have you there. But this is important to really begin to talk about that. And so one of the things, I'll make an announcement here, I had suggested we were talking about that, that the commission actually do a program about urban trauma. So we're going to want you to do that, a statewide program about urban trauma, students, families with urban trauma. So I think we're going to, this is the first people are hearing about this, but I think we're going to do something around that. So now we'll move to item number 11, public comments. I think we have two people who signed up.
Yeah, two people signed up. The first one is Linda Stork.
Stork, if you're here, sign in. I don't believe she's here.
The second person is Charles Cradaville.
Charles Cradaville, Mr. Cradaville. Welcome, please sign in.
Good evening, members of the board. Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, editor of New Brunswick Today. I want to start by extending sincere condolences to Mr. Spencer on his loss. And forgive me for being late. I may have missed it, but I wanted to make sure that another person's passing is acknowledged. I want to say rest in peace, Dave Harris, who was, of course, a community leader who made a major impact on this city and this school district and zealously advocated for children here. We were truly blessed to have him devote his energy and his career to a very noble cause here. And I know one thing that he really wanted to see in this district was kids having access to a swimming pool. So I'm sure he's looking down on us and I wanted to ask, can anyone tell me if the students are using the pool at the wellness center?
Yeah, we'll look at that, but we believe they are, Charlie, but we'll get back to you.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not sure what the restrictions, the COVID-19 restrictions for that's limited, I know. They were using the pool prior, we'll get back to you.
Okay, well, I think we should definitely make sure at a minimum that they have access to that pool. Even better would be to have one in one of the schools. I want to follow up on the Bonquita Valenti School. If you look at the August 31, 2021 monthly report from DevCo, it said that they were planning to be commencing the structure January 2021. Of course, that did not happen. We're now hearing that it is scheduled to begin in April. So that's three months behind on that benchmark, actually four months if you go by the initial reports. What is the board's analysis of why DevCo is behind on meeting that benchmark for construction?
There's no comment on that. We don't have enough details to give that to, so there's no comment on that.
Okay, well, somebody needs to hold them accountable. I know the MCIA gave me similar answers of, you know, we don't know what's going on in the supply chain maybe, but somebody has to make sure that this school gets built and gets built on time. How much of the $55 million has been spent? I've asked this before and been promised an answer.
At this stage, no comment. We don't have that information yet.
Okay, that is unacceptable, since this is a construction of a school, somebody's got to know how much money is left. And I'd like to know what happens if, excuse me, I'm using my time here. I'd like to know what happens if the $55 million runs out and the school's not complete. Who's on the hook to pay for the remainder?
Javier.
It's ten thousand, go. Your time is up.
It's time to.
Who is on the hook to pay for the remainder if the $55 million doesn't cover the construction? Does anyone know?
Charlie, your time is up, but as we said before, the school will be built. It will be completed and, you know, the district is not paying anything more for the school.
As I look out, I see everyone is old enough to remember the Red Shaw School, where we were promised a school on a timeline and that timeline was not met and kids were in the warehouse a lot longer than we were led to believe they would be. So we need to get answers to these questions. It's unacceptable that you don't have them tonight. I hope to receive them before your next meeting, but better believe I'll be back. Thank you.
We also remember the Lawrence Sterling School, which was completed in advance of the timeline. And so having been Deputy Commissioner of the Department of Community Affairs, I have a good understanding of the construction process and there are all sorts of elements, including supply chain and other things that will impact that. Weather, supply chains, all sorts of things impact the timeframe. So sometimes you're early, sometimes you're late, sometimes you're on time. That's the reality of it. Item, I'm going back to the president's report. One thing I would like to do, and Mr. Cradaville, thanks for mentioning, is Dave Harris was someone that, you know, I got to know and would come to the board meetings and would generally very politely challenge the board, but would have some good ideas and some good insights and just had a passion for young people in the district. And so, you know, he will be missed. And so I'd like to take a moment of silence for Mr. Dave Harris. May he rest in peace. And just my comments relate to Dave Harris. And one of the realities is that, you know, in addition to coming to board meetings, and he wasn't coming recently, but he would behind the scenes talk to people and really ask about making things happen. And that's, that's an important lesson for folks out there is that either action really doesn't happen in these public sessions, they happen behind the scenes and they happen with good ideas and they happen with opening our eyes to things we didn't know about. So we're always welcome to work with folks in the community if in fact they have some surreal insights and can do it in a way that will allow us to react to it. So with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Item number 12. Is there a motion to accept the resolutions as presented? Is there a second? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Adorno?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer? Ms. Sevilla? Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Must been approved.
Now moving to item number 13, the Finance Committee Report. This is Diana Solis, chairperson.
Thank you, Dr. Caldwell. The Finance Committee was able to meet and we'd like to have a, sorry.
Mr. Motion.
A motion. We'd like to have a motion to approve the report as presented.
Wonderful, thank you. Is there a second? Is there a second? Mr. Ortiz, so roll call, please.
Mr. Adorno?
Yes, but I'm staying on pages eight and 19.
Not that. Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes, I'm staying on page 22.
Not that. Mr. Ortiz? Mrs. Seawood? Mrs. Solis? Mr. Spencer?
I'm staying on pages eight and 19.
Eight and 19. Ms. Sevilla? Thank you. Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Must been approved.
Thank you. Item number 14, the resolution for closed session. I'll read the resolution and then we'll vote on it. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 10:4 to 6 provides that certain matters of a public body may be discussed in closed session and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, personnel matters, matters of attorney-client privilege, now therefore be it resolved that the aforementioned subjects shall be discussed in closed session by this Board of Education and administrative staff in the minutes of said closed session. Discussion will be made available to the public when the reasons for the nondisclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act no longer exist. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Roll call, Javier.
Mr. Adorno? Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer? Ms. Sevilla? Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Must been approved. We are closed session.
We're in closed session. Okay, we're back in public session. The Personnel Committee Report. Benito Ortiz.
Yes, Mr. President. The Personnel Committee met on February 10. We had discussion in the Personnel Committee Report and reviewed also the 2021, 2022 vacancy report. We also had discussion on the virtual job fair update, which has been posted in all our platforms. And you can see by the flyer, it's going to be February 23, 2020. So if you're interested in getting a job here, follow us. And we also had discussion on two descriptions, job descriptions, coordinator of attendance, and truancy, that's been revised, and also assessment specialist. And with that being said, I need a recommendation to accept the Personnel Report.
Your motion to accept? Motion and a second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? You want to go?
Yeah, must been approved.
Yeah, roll call. Yeah.
Mr. Adorno? Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis? Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla? Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Must been approved.
Wonderful. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Okay, all in favor?
All.
Oppose, abstentions? Have a great evening. Thank you all very much. Good meeting.